Do it.
Okay, I have seven o'clock. I am broadcasting and are live.
Great. Thank you, Andy. Hello, everyone, and welcome to the first, the first zoning board of appeals meeting for 2021 at seven o'clock. And this is the new report zoning board of appeals meeting for January 12th, 2021 via Zoom. My name is Mark Moore, the vice chair, and I'm calling the meeting to order as our chair, Rob Chimpetti can't be here tonight. Luckily for all on this call, and especially me, as always, we have the city plan director, Andy Port, driving the presentation visuals and managing the participation of our attendees, as well as our city planner, Caitlin Sullivan. And I also want to introduce our note taker, Gretchen Joy, as we always need to recognize her efforts. I will start with a roll call to ensure that we have the proper quorum tonight. And as I mentioned earlier, I am a Mark Moore vice chair, obviously in attendance. Rob Chimpetti, our chair is absent. I'll now introduce each member and asset they respond with here. Secretary Steven Delisle.
Here.
Member Rachel Webb.
Here.
Member Ken Swanton.
Here.
Associate Member Walter Chagnan.
Here.
Finding five members present, we have a quorum and can proceed with the meeting and all members will be voting tonight. For those new to the zoning board meetings and or new to Zoom format, as we continue to deal with this pandemic, we find it helpful to describe the format of the meeting and how it will flow. With the roll call completed, we now move on to public hearings. For this portion, I will start by reading a description of the public notice to identify the application to be presented and discussed. I will then ask for the applicant to present their case, for lack of a better word, and often it's the applicant's legal counsel or architect or designer that presents the proposed changes to the property. Once the presentation is complete, we then move to the reason why these gatherings, although virtual now, are called public hearings and take public comment. I then asked any member of the public attendees who wish to comment on this proposal to do so. It's a vital part of making these public hearings robust exchange exchanges of thoughts and ideas. I'll start by asking anyone in virtual attendance who wishes to attendance, I'm sorry, who wishes to comment to raise their hand electronically using the mouse and cursor to utilize the raised hand icon in the attendees window on the computer. Andy Port, or I will announce those that wish to speak, and please remember to unmute yourself before you start. We asked that before starting to comment, and you provide your name and address clearly for the record and keep your comments succinct and to the point so others who may wish to comment can efficiently participate. We then proceed with public comment until raised hands are exhausted. Once all public comments have been heard, that portion of the hearing is closed, and we move on to questions from the board. The board, sometimes inspired by public comments, will then question the applicant or any of the team to flesh out further detail into aid in their decision. Once the board has exhausted questioning, I will close that portion of the meeting and move on to deliberations. Deliberations in the public forum is the cornerstone of the public hearing. Everything the board discusses about discusses about the application is done in public or virtual public now so that all in attendance get to hear the thought process of each member and the board as a whole, as it moves towards a decision. During the process, it sometimes becomes evidence that evident the board may feel it either needs more information or is leaning in opposition for one reason or another. And we, as a board, will move to continue the application until we can obtain further information or give the applicant the opportunity to ask for continuance to address any concerns before closing deliberations and going to a formal vote, which has consequences for the applicant with respect to timing and cost. Once deliberations are complete, I will then seek a motion from the board, and when seconded, a vote will be called. Because we use Robert's rules of order, you will hear a motion on the application made in the affirmative for to approve, even if a board member making the motion plans to vote to deny. If the application passes, the happy applicant moves on and then close that application and move on to the next, applying all the same rules. All right, that's it. I've called the role. We have a quorum. Let's move forward. Our first application on tonight's docket is Michael Gray, 1214 Harrison Street, 2020-067. An appeal continued from 12820, appeal of the notice of violation issued on 8/11/20 by the zoning administrator. Might we hear from the applicant? At least David Mack might be in attendance.
Man, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can everyone hear me okay?
Sure can.
So I think we're here on the appeal. We've, we've requested a continuance into February 23rd. This is the appeal of the zoning determination. And we're also here, I think, to finalize. I don't think there's a public hearing, but we're here to finalize the decision that was made at the prior hearing in December on our approval to restart construction again.
That's true. I absolutely neglected to mention at the end of the meeting, when the public hearing is over, we'll then do the business meeting where that will come up. So that was a I missed.
Yeah, I believe I had spoken either to Caitlin or to Andy and because I have another hearing after this that we were going to put the this matter in its entirety on first, so I could get off before my next hearing. Is that not been communicated, I believe?
You know, I believe that's true, Andy. I do now recall seeing that, right? We did. I believe Rob, before he had to step away, had agreed to do that.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so on the here, on the appeal, I think the we've, we've submitted a, a request for a continuance like we have on multiple occasions before because we hope that with the decision that hopefully is going to be formally issued in its final form tonight, we won't need to go forward with the appeal, but out of the months of caution until the decision is actually inked and the appeal period expires on that decision, we want to keep that appeal alive. So we've requested a continuous of the 23rd of February.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Any discussion from the board on the request to continue this appeal to 22321?
I'll make a motion if you're looking for that, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue this case number 2020-067, the appeal of the notice of violation from August 11th to our zoning board meeting on February 23rd.
Sorry, go ahead.
You go ahead, bud.
All right. Thank you, Bud Shagnon. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the continuance to 22321 for case 2020-067, which was made by Rachel Webb, seconded by Bud Chagnan. We will now take a vote. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Chagnan.
Yes.
And Mr. Moore, I vote yes as well, all in the affirmative. The continuance is granted. Right now, at the request of the applicant, we are going to move to review the draft decision on 1214 Harrison Street. And ask if there's any comments, if, if the, if the board agrees with the, with the decision and how it's, how it's presented. I can say that Mr. Chimpetti, in his absence, said that, you know, he did vote in approval, and he wanted me to make sure he mentioned that, as written, he is, he is fine with the, with the decision and how it's put down. Is there any other discussion on that?
Chair, this is Bud Shagnon. I just had one question, and it might be semantics. I know the decision in the beginning, a couple of paragraphs states that the, the deck will be removed from the existing plans. But when we go into the heart of the decision, the section that's called plans and documents, it falls silent on that. And I just wanted to make sure that the rest of the board was comfortable with that. But it's, it's not, it's not brought out in the plans and documents section of the decision. It's, it's in the forward, if you will.
This is Andy. I can definitely indicate that I think that's the appropriate placement of that and not a problem. That's again, just the office's opinion, but I don't see that as being an issue, and I think that's pretty appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
Okay, would that change? Any other comments?
Can I ask a question? This is Mr. Mack.
Sure.
I had sent, I don't know whether the decision as drafted included a couple of very minor edits that I had suggested. I don't know whether that's been presented, which clarified that the moratorium on occupancy would commence upon issuance of the certificate of occupancy as opposed to setting upon or after the construction project is completed and issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mack, that change was incorporated.
Okay, good. Thank you. I don't suppose the board would consider a five month moratorium now that, five weeks after we, we thought we had a decision. You know, I understand it takes quite a while to, to put a decision in paper, but it's been five full weeks since we had what we thought an approval of our request.
Yeah, and apologize, Attorney Mack. Generally speaking, the chair felt comfortable with the decision as written by the department effectuating the board's vote, but did feel it was very important, given the, the, you know, difficulty with this particular project or hearing, that the full board should be able to take a look at that written decision as well. So that's the only reason we're here.
All right.
All right, so we have the decision as written with the necessary edits to it. Is everyone comfortable with that? Are we comfortable with?
I mean, I am Ken Swanton.
Okay.
I am as well. Rachel Webb, do we need to vote on this or just?
Yeah, I think we should. So I think a motion to approve the draft decision.
So moved. I'll move that ZB approves the decision as written for 12 Harrison Street.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Okay, we motion to approve the decision as written, made by Rachel Webb, seconded by Ken Swanton, and will now take the vote on that, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagnan.
Yes.
And Mr. Moore, I vote yes as well, all in the affirmative. So as written, that decision is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you accommodating me and taking, taking us early.
You're welcome. So now with that, we will now move back to our second public hearing tonight, and this is Michael Shay, 3 Liberty Street. Application 2020-084, a variance continued from the 24th of November last year to replace current fixed window with a window that opens. And I understand as a request to withdraw. I don't know if anyone, if anyone representing the applicant on the call.
Yeah, I don't see anyone in our audience that appears to be the applicant.
Okay.
But
This is Mr. Delisle. Just a quick question here. I was not in attendance for the, the hearing on this matter for 3 Liberty Street. And I should probably withdraw or recuse myself from, from the, the request to withdraw, I would think.
I would agree with that.
Yep. So if we will, you can note that in the record. Thank you.
Thank you both.
So Mr. Delisle recused to that. We have a request to withdraw. We usually do this without prejudice for the application 2020-0, I mean, sorry, 2020-084 for 3 Liberty Street. And we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. It's Rachel Webb to withdraw 3 Liberty Street, 2020-84 variance.
Second, Ken Swanton.
Okay.
Let's get the motioning team in motion here. So we have a motion to grant the request to withdraw without prejudice, application 2020-084, made by Rachel Webb, seconded by Ken Swanton. We now take the vote, Mr. Delisle.
He can't.
I'm recusing.
I'm sorry, Mike. Yeah, horrible memory. I already forgot. Mr. Delisle is recused. Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Chagnan.
Yes.
And Mr. Morris says, yes, that's four in the affirmative. Therefore, the withdrawal without prejudice is granted. Mr. Delisle is back in now for the discussion. For the next application on the docket, which is for 68 Middle Street. Application 2020-086, dimensional variance continued from the meeting of the short, brief meeting from 128. Tonight, we have a request to withdraw. And it was, the variance was going to be needed to allow an accessory garage to be built within the side and rear yard setbacks. Might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a confusion to everything regarding this application, Lisa Mead, me, Taylor Macosta, on behalf of Winwood Shaw LLC, I apologize for not introducing myself. So the board might remember that we had a special permit for nonconformities, which reduced this existing used as for family, legal three family to a two family with the construction of a garage at the rear of the property. And we requested a special permit for nonconformities for that, as well as a dimensional variance for the garage. Right before the last hearing, pretty close to right before the last hearing, the zoning code enforcement officer made a determination that she was mistaken on her denial on our original request and that she thought a dimensional variance was not required for the accessory structure located within the six foot of the rear yard setback for accessory structures. There was quite a discussion on the board regarding that. And since we had received that, that notice late, we requested a continuance for the dimensional variance. And the board granted the special permit for nonconformities. You might recall that all of the neighbors were there in support of this project. So we continued the dimensional variance with the hope that we would hear something more definitive. And as of the end of last week or the middle of last week, we submitted a presentation for our dimensional variance this evening, thinking that we would just do belt and suspenders. And should the zoning code enforcement officer make a different determination or a more clear written determination? Nonetheless, we would seek a dimensional variance. Should that be overturned at some point in time? Or should the ordinance change, but just so that it was clear that my, my applicant could move forward, my client could move forward with the construction of the garage? After we had submitted that late Friday or early Friday, sometime on Friday, we did get a a, maybe it was even Thursday, a more clear determination by the zoning code enforcement officer that it was clearly her opinion continued to be that a dimensional variance was not required. And so in deference to the zoning code enforcement officer and her opinion and not wanting to put my client through a hearing, we filed a request for variance, excuse me, a request to withdraw the variance application. This afternoon, late, it came to my attention from staff that, in fact, the board may want to have a much larger discussion related to section 6F of the ordinance and its interpretation and may request that my, this application be continued again. As a result, if in fact, that's the case, my client would like to move forward with the request for the variance and have that discussion with the board, seek the board's determination on the variance, which I hope would be favorable, given our discussion at the last meeting and given the hardships related to the lot, which I will go through shortly, and not actually request a withdrawal. And then the board can do whatever the board wants to do with the zoning code enforcement officer relative to the changed interpretation with regards to 6F. And if it pleases the board, I would like to present my variance application and have the board make a determination.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. I'm just going to question what the board, given that the sticking point of the last meeting was over the interpretation. The applicant has presented a way to make sure that a decision could be rendered tonight. I'd like to proceed first with a vote, or at least get some discussion on whether the board would agree with the current, the, the new interpretation of the variance rules as it pertains to this case and going forward, and whether or not the request to withdraw would be granted. And if, if, if that's not going to happen, then I, I would suggest that the procedure would be, in order to be fair to the applicant, would be to go ahead with the variance.
If I, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
A moment. Procedurally, and I don't know if town, city solicitor's on tonight or not. Procedurally, you don't actually have, the board does not actually have a question before it. There's no appeal of zoning code enforcement officers determination, if you will. I have a dimensional variance in front of the board based upon a determination that was made in whenever it was, October, maybe. So I don't know. I mean, Mr. Port, if the city solicitor's on, he can time in. I don't know that the question of the interpretation, which is why I want to go forward with the dimensional variance, with the, the question of the interpretation is properly before the board at this time. You may have a discussion about it.
No, that, that. I don't think that, I don't think that Mark was suggesting that be a formal proceeding per se, but I, I did think that Mark is correct to suggest that the board might want to have some brief discussion or overview of what the determination was.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm a certain of the chair. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, I might have made myself clear, but I just thought a brief discussion on, on on why, and I think the dimensional variance option that, that you present makes sense tonight because of all the questions that were brought up, and this is not going to be a formal discussion of that. It's not going to be drawn out. I just wanted to get a quick a temperature of the board on. Mr. Chair, if I may.
Sure, please.
Just, just from the office's perspective, looking at this, you know, the new, you know, information or approach here. The office has no objection to what Attorney Mead has put out as far as the, the process to proceed, mainly because we could conceive the board, if the board feels comfortable with the same project, essentially that was approved via special permit at the previous meeting, granting the variance, then the, the variance could indicate that the variance has been granted to the extent needed. And, and again, as Attorney Mead pointed out, we, the board may want to have further discussion about the interpretation of this provision or, or others with the zoning administrator or legal counsel, but wouldn't necessarily need to hold up this particular project, which had already been given a previous form of relief.
Thank you. And I think that's fair, and it's a, and that's a good suggestion. So maybe perhaps the best thing to do is, yeah, to have Attorney Mead proceed with the dimensional variance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So as the board might recall, so Andy, I have a presentation. I don't know if you have it available. While he's pulling that up, the board might recall that this property is located at 68 Middle Street. There's currently a four family, a legal three family, but has been used for a number of years as a four family on the property. And the applicant received a modification to a preexisting nonconforming structure and used to reduce that to a two family and to change the, the rear portion of the building and to construct a freestanding two car garage at the rear of the property.
Apologies, Attorney Mead, just wanted to interject. When did you submit the slides for this evening? Was that?
Last Thursday, maybe Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
Idiots, Caitlin, it should be towards the bottom of the project entry.
Second. Yeah.
So the property is nonconforming for lot area. There's 5,487 square feet. We're 15,000 are required. It has frontage of 38.6 where 120 is required. Front setback of 11.1 where 25 is required. Both side setbacks are under the 20 feet at point 10 and 16.6. And the lot coverage is 31.3 with a proposal of 33.4 where 25 is required. And the open space is 31.3% with a proposal of 17.5 or 40 is required. Thank you very much, Andy. So the applicant, and here's the property. Thank you. So as you can see from the property has a, the, the shape is unique. As was pointed out at the last meeting, so it obviously is a long, narrow piece, but it goes to the back and it has this jog in the rear of the back. And where the garage is proposed to be located, and in addition to that, the topography drops from Middle Street back to the rear of the lot such that they're actually going to have to construct retaining walls around the garage to hold up the neighbors' property on both sides. So from the shape of the lot, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to build a functional garage, the 22 by 24 accessory garage. On, and instead of it being a rectangular shape that is flush with Middle Street, as I noted earlier, the lot juts diagonally inward at an angle off the street. And then, of course, there's the jog at the rear of the street, in addition to the drop in the topography. In addition to that, the, one of the other hardships, while it can't be the only hardship, is that there's a financial hardship. And as the board is aware, the applicant originally intended to use this project as a three family, which would have only required special permits. However, based upon the negotiations and discussions with the neighbors, the project was reduced again to a two family with the construction of the garage, which makes a difference from a financial point of view relative to the two residential units would be constructed in there. And so as a result, while a financial hardship alone is not enough to justify the grant of a variance, it can be a factor when combined with the other hardships that by support the grant of a variance. And here we have the shape of the lot. The proposal also does not derogate from the intent and purpose of the ordinance. Here's the these, this is the proposed garage to be constructed. The proposal does not derogate from the intent and purpose of the ordinance. The location, the proposed accessory is placed at a location that can be best functioned as accessory garage despite the dimensional limitations of the lot. And further, the proposed change won't be detrimental to the neighborhood as there will be no negative impacts on any of the neighbors. And in addition, the contractor is making sure to support the neighbors' properties and install a number of improvements around the property to address neighbors' concerns. If you take a look around the neighborhood, there's a number of accessory structures. Thank you. This is the, my map's view. A number of accessory structures located on at least less than six feet from either the side or rear boundaries. And so it also does not derogate from that purpose, and it's not a grant of relief that would be different than any other property or other properties in the neighborhood. So currently, the applicant has now a special permit for nonconformities. But the applicant would also request that the board grant a variance to allow the construction of the garage and the rear yard setback where six feet is required. The proposal would put the garage at 3.5 and 3.9 on the side and four feet from the rear lot line. And with that, the applicant respectfully requests the board grant a variance based upon those factors.
Thank you. Okay, with the, the applicant is done discussing the particulars of the, of the variance that's being desired. Do we have any public comments? So right now, we'll seek public comment. Anyone, any of the attendees that wishes to comment on this application, please raise your hand electronically and you'll be recognized.
First person we have is Fred Nehart.
Go ahead, Mr. Nehart.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Fred Neathart. I live at 70 Middle Street in the city. I'm a direct the butter to the project, and I support this variance. The developer, the project team has worked very hard with the neighborhood group to come up with a compromise that's it, which is consistent with the neighborhood standards in our opinion. And I totally support this variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, is there anyone else that would like to electronically raise their hand and comment on this application? Looks like I see ones.
Stephanie Nikic.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie Nikic, 93 High Street. I would like to thank the applicant for moving forward with the application for a variance, which I think is required. And I also support the variance, so I hope you will grant it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the application at this time? I don't see any hands.
So you know others at this time, Chair.
All right. Seeing no other hands, I will close public comment and will go to questions from the board. Seeing no other hands, I will close public comment and we'll go to questions from the board. And I'll just start in usual order. Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions for Attorney Need relative to this application. We, you know, we fully went over this on December the eighth and I will leave, you know, that, those will be the end of my, my questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Webb.
I too have no questions. I feel as though this application was thoroughly presented and discussed at our previous meeting. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I agree. And I think we had a very thorough discussion last time. I thought the, the neighbor and Fred Neehart, in particular, summarized things really well. About how this helps the neighborhood as part of an overall plan. So I have, also have no questions.
Excellent. Mr. Chagman.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I, I've got no questions. I agree with the rest of the board. I think our previous discussions kind of edited this out quite well, so I'm comfortable with going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chagman. And I agree with, with my colleagues here that I don't have any questions and this has been vetted quite thoroughly previously. So with that, I will close questions and we'll go to deliberations where everyone in the attendance gets to hear the thought process as we move towards decision. So very quickly, we're right back to Mr. Delisle. You have any comments to the break?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have some comments here. Firstly, I appreciate the procedure that we're following here to go forward and discuss this in the context of the variance. I think that it's, it's best for everyone and I, I do apologize to Attorney Mead and her client for even for, for the, the suffering that they had to go through in our last meeting with regard to the, the issue with the, the new interpretation, but it, it's good that we're going to go forward in this manner. And in that regard, I think that here we do have a, a very oddly shaped lot. In fact, I'm not a huge fan of the oddly shaped lot argument, but this is one of the strangest shaped lots I think that we've encountered during my time on the board with respect to the almost perfect parallelogram with a perfect square attached to the end. It's, it's an interestingly shaped lot. So I think that, that based on the, the lot shape, we certainly meet point one of the, the variance four-part test. The conditions and circumstances are unique to the applicant's lot. I think the strict application of the provisions of this chapter would in fact deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the lot because you'd have this, this end part of the lot really not being very useful at all in terms of what could be done with it. So I think that that third, or that second portion of the test is passed as well. The third portion is passed, i- in my opinion. The unique conditions are not the result of the applicant. And the fourth portion of the test, the relief would not constitute a grant of a special privilege. I, I don't believe that that would be the case here under i- i- in this, with respect to this application, as there are many accessory structures in the neighborhood and on Middle Street. So I think that I am in full support of this application and the variance required. Thanks.
Excellent. Mr. Delisle, well said, well put. Ms. Webb.
I as well am in full support of this proposed variance for all of the reasons that Mr. Delisle just detailed so perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanton.
I too support this proposed variance. I think Mr. Delisle summarized the criteria really well. The neighbors have talked about how it helps the neighborhood and I also think it's helps the city at large. You know, just outside the neighborhood, I mean, to treat this very unusual lot this way and, and, and in working with the neighbors and coming up with this constructive solution. So I can support this.
Excellent. Mr. Chagman.
Yeah, I have to agree with the rest of the board. Thank you, Mr. Delisle for, for expressing everyone's opinion. Very well done. So I can support this, this variance. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I will just agree with my colleagues that Mr. Delisle did a wonderful job of, of explaining why I think the board as a whole can support this going forward. So with that, we'll close a discussion deliberation and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Delisle, I'll make, I'll make the motion for, to grant the variance application for sixty-eight Middle Street, application number twenty twenty dash eighty-six.
I'll second it. Rachel Webb.
Okay, with the motion made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Ms. Webb. Mr. Delisle, would you be opposed to an addendum like mentioning that we will approve the dimensional variance to the extent that it's needed?
Yeah.
Just add that.
We can approve it. Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent. So with that said, we have a motion made and approved, I mean, and seconded by Ms. Webb. We now go to a vote. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagman.
Yes.
Mr. Moore, yes. All in the affirmative variance to the extent that it's needed is granted and the applicant moves forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Mr. Delisle. I didn't mind at all the discussion at the last meeting. I thought it was very informative. So thank you.
Well, thank.
Thank you all. With that, we move on to the next application on tonight's docket, and that is for six Caldwell's Court. It is application twenty twenty dash zero eight seven, special permit to allow for an in-law apartment above an existing garage. Might we hear from the applicant, which I believe is Eliza Bovee?
Lisa.
Alisa, you know, I should have known it was spelled that way.
That's okay. I am here with my husband, Harry Bovee.
Hello? Please go right ahead.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can.
This is Andy Port. I have the graphics that you've submitted. So if you'd like to show anything in particular, feel free to identify them and I'll pull them up. Otherwise, I'll pull what's most relevant.
Yeah, so we did submit the floor plan that is above an existing two-car garage structure. This has been approved by the prior owner. They were going to move forward with completing the construction, but when we purchased it, we weren't prepared to do that. So at this time, we do have a need to move my father in. So yes, you've pulled up the plans. I appreciate that. And you can see in the upper left-hand corner, actually Gary Ingles is also remotely, he's not with us, but he's also on, who's going to be doing the construction. And so we've sort of gone through the process to make sure that we have everything in place that we need. But nothing is changing to our actual existing structure. It's just finishing internally to make it into a livable space. It's already framed. It just needs to have, obviously the walls put up, the electricity and the bathroom will need to be plumbed. Have its own separate entryway, but we can still access from the house as well.
Okay, excellent. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Unless you have questions for us.
We may. But first, if there's nothing else to, to present, we'll move on to public comment. So if there's anyone in attendance that would like to comment on this application, please electronically raise your hand to be recognized. Don't see any.
Not seeing any, Chair.
All right. Seeing none, we will close public comment and move to questions of the applicant. Mr. Delisle, do you have any questions?
I do. Ms. Bovee, just to sort of kind of take you through the, the, the findings that we need to make, I'll, I'm going to just ask you a couple of questions. You said in your, in your remarks that it's your father that's going to be moving into the in-law unit.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Yeah. And could you, could you just sort of speak a little bit as to how big the, the, the in-law apartment unit will be in terms of square footage?
I think it was six seventy-two. That.
Or was it six twenty-seven? I see six twenty-seven in the, in my materials here. But I just wanted to make sure that that's, that's what you guys are, are have as the square footage.
Yes, my husband was going to go confirm it. I have all the paperwork in front of me. I'm so sorry that I can't locate off the top of my head.
No, no, that's okay.
This is Andy Port. In our staff report, we have it down as a six twenty-seven.
Yeah, that, that'd be, that's correct.
Okay. Good. Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb, do you have any questions for the applicant?
So let's see, our staff report says that there's a space for three vehicles. So does your plan show those parking space locations?
You cut out for one second. Could you please repeat that?
Sure. I'm just saying that our staff report shows there is sufficient space for at least three vehicles. I was just looking to see that and I'm looking at the graphic now on screen.
There's actually five. We have a huge driveway and my dad doesn't drive anyway. But there won't be any change in the driveway. It's sufficient.
Okay. And in terms of context, is the location here, you kind of, I'm not really familiar with where Caldwell's Court is. Is it sort of behind the Park Lunch in the middle of the block?
Yes, it's exactly behind Park Lunch.
So you just have the singular access in the one driveway or is there another access point?
Right. We have the one, if you pull into the parking lot, which is also our street Caldwell's Court, and you go straight back, that's the only, that's the driveway. Yeah.
Okay. So, so this garage was already built and you're just looking to the, the second floor space was undeveloped and you're looking to finish it out as an in-law unit.
Right. It's already framed. It's, it's sort of ready to go. We just need to actually, the garage has been there since we purchased the house. And so now we just need to actually get the insulation and the wall, you know, utilities, right?
Okay, great. Thank you. That's very helpful graphic. Thanks, Andy.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I, I, I appreciate my colleagues' questions. They kind of covered mine. I drove over to Park Lunch today and looked back there. I can't even really see the garage from, from, from the street. So it's kind of, it's kind of just tucked in back there. And so I actually have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chagman.
I've got no questions, Chair. The, my, our colleagues asked everything I, I was wondering about, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Excellent. And I agree, the questions the colleagues have had so far have, have sufficed for me. So I will close the questioning part and move on to deliberations. And remember, we're deliberating about granting an in-law permit for this. So special permit findings pursuant to ten eight seven. So if we could frame discussion around in-law apartment, that would be helpful in fashioning things going forward. So I'll start with Mr. Delisle. I have an audio issue, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I.
Oh, there we go.
I, I'm so sorry. I hadn't unmuted myself, but I was, I was talking up a storm.
It was probably great, but you have to repeat it now.
Really good. I, I don't think I'll be able to do it as well the second time.
You were just shot.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Moore. So we've heard from the Boves and I think that they've hit a lot of the points for us, for our special permit findings for the in-law apartment. The first finding that we have to make is that the in-law apartment will be occupied by parents, grandparents, et cetera. And we've heard that it's going to be Ms. Bovee's father who will be living there. So that first point is satisfied. The dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance are, ordinance are otherwise met. And this is an existing structure that's going to be modified. So I think that that second point is satisfied as well. The gross floor area of the in-law apartment shall not exceed nine hundred square feet. We've heard and seen in the, the materials that it's going to be approximately six hundred and twenty-seven square feet. So I think we're, we're good on point three as well. Number four, reasonable conditions granting the special permit. I don't think we need to get into that because we're, we're comfortable with the parking in the driveway as it exists. So that, that prong is satisfied as well. The fifth, health, safety and building codes will be met and that would be something that the, the Boves would be responsible for working out otherwise. So I think that that takes us through the, the requirements for the in-law apartment. Except there are some other additional obligations that the applicant would have to satisfy. But I don't think we need to get into those for the findings that we're making this evening. So I, I think that with respect to the special permit for the in-law apartment, I believe that, that they have satisfied the requirements for such a permit. With respect to the special permit findings, I think that those are likely satisfied as well. I'll let one of my colleagues run through that long list and I'll end my remarks there. But I, I, I can support the, the special permit for an in-law apartment and the special permit generally.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb, you'd like to take the ball and run with it from here?
Sure. I too support the detail Mr. Delisle just provided about the compliance of the proposal with the in-law special permit findings. These more general special permit findings are the uses listed in the table of use regulations. It is essential and desirable to the public convenience or welfare because new report needs these various types of housing. The requested use is not going to create any undue traffic congestion and have negligible impacts on existing traffic as the applicant expressed. Her father does not own a vehicle and does not drive. Requested use will not overload any public water sewer municipal systems. It's compatible with the surrounding area. Any special regulations for use set forth in the permit table are fulfilled. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. Number seven, it will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause an excess of that particular use that would be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. Number eight, the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of this ordinance. Number nine, the proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner to admit any dangerous, noxious or other objectionable uses. So additionally, the application does not appear to trigger, does not appear to trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance. So that summarizes the special permit findings.
Appreciate that, Ms. Webb. Gentlemen, there's not a lot left.
Gentlemen, there's not a lot left to find here, but Mr. Swan, do you have any further comments?
I think my colleague summarized it pretty well. I will say that we've done quite a few of these in-law apartments recently and this one is the least impactful one I have seen. So I think sort of take the cake there, so I can support this.
Excellent, I would agree. Mr. Chagman?
Yes, I can support this. Thank you to Mr. Delisle and Ms. Webb for going down the bullet points. Meet them all. I can support this. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. And I would agree for the points made by all my colleagues that this is a solid application and I can certainly support it. So with that, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit 2020-876 Caldwell's Court to allow an in-law apartment above the existing garage.
I'll second it. I'll second it, Ken Swanon.
As you have a motion to approve made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Swanon. And I will now take a vote. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanon?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
All in the affirmative, the application is passed or approved. Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next item on tonight's docket is from Nicholas Poreno, 21 Goldsmith Drive, 2020-088, a special permit to allow an in-law apartment. Something that we might be familiar with. I believe Lisa Mead is going to be presenting this on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, Rachel Webb speaking. I need to recuse myself from this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Lisa Mead, me tell them Costa, on behalf of Jennifer Tierney, who is the owner of the property, and Nick Pirano, who is her brother-in-law, who has assisted in this application. Everybody has a vested interest in taking care of the parents here. So this property is at 21 Goldsmith Drive and I hope you find that this is also a least impactful in-law apartment using the existing structure. Jennifer lives at 21 Goldsmith Drive alone. She's seeking your approval to allow her to renovate a portion of the first floor of her home and to allow her to have an in-law apartment reconfigured inside. Jennifer's father had early onset Alzheimer's, which was diagnosed six years ago at a young age. And this will provide a space for her mother Diane and her father to live and have some financial stability, but still to be in contact with one of her children. It's important to note that all the construction will occur within the existing footprint and conversion of existing space. If you hear the next slide. The square footage of the proposed in-law is 651 square feet. I'm going to say that a couple of times because I think it was a little confusing on the original application that was filed. And so we filed some clarifications on that last week. So if you go to the next slide, please. So what you can see, this is 21 Goldsmith Drive. And the in-law apartment is going to be constructed in the space where the garage is right now. So that garage door, when you look at the plans we're going to look at in a minute, you'll see that there will be a entry door, that garage door will come off. It will be closed off, there'll be an entry door on the right side of that and then a window directly next to it. And then it'll be finished with siding to match the rest of the house. So if you go to the next slide, please. What was originally proposed, and this goes to the requirement to have an additional parking space. So of course, Jennifer's dad does not drive, but her mother does. So there will be two cars, but nonetheless, we can show that there'll be an extra parking space. So originally, there was a proposal to have a parking space directly head-on adjacent to the garage. However, Jennifer's had a contractor out there. If you go to the next slide, please, Andy. And what they're actually proposing to do is actually, it will be better to construct a parking space off to the right of the driveway so as not to impact the existing structure at all. So there's plenty of space there that won't impact anything, won't have to be a larger curb cut. You just pull in and pull over. There's two cars, the driveway is wide enough for two cars, but they can have a third car to the right there. So that's the preferred parking arrangement. If you could go to the next slide, please, Andy. So where you see here, what we tried to do is highlight on our additional submission this week, the red area, this is the first floor. The red area is the joint area, if you will. So there'll be an entry that'll come in, the new door that everybody will be able to enter and then a window. And that's all common space for both the upstairs and the downstairs. So there's a closet for everybody, the stairs to get upstairs, and then a laundry for everybody. So that's common space. So the rest of that area, which will become the in-law apartment, is 651 square feet. So it's well within the 900 square foot requirement for an existing structure. So the project will be completed within the requirements, the ordinance. If you go to the next slide, Andy. The in-law apartment will be occupied by Jennifer's parents in line with the intent of the ordinance. In this, there's a strong need and desire to have both the owner and her parents enjoy this type of living arrangement for the reasons I've stated. There'll be no change of footprint to the house, so there's not going to be any modification to, if you go to the next slide, there won't be any modification to the existing dimensional requirements of the house. So there won't be any changes to that because it will all be internal except for the garage. Door will be changed, as I noted earlier. Next slide, please. The gross square footage will be under the 900 square foot allowed. It will be 651 square feet for the in-law apartment itself. As I noted, the remainder of that space on the first floor is common area. In the next slide, we also provided additional parking as one additional parking space. The in-law unit is shown that it can be provided. On all health and safety and building codes will be met, is required by the ordinance. And the applicant agrees to comply with the remainder of the ordinance. That is that it will be recorded if it's granted. And it will, they will agree that on the 11th and 23rd months following the grant or renewal of the special permit, the owner will certify that it continues to be an in-law apartment. And it will expire within three years if it's not, if they don't come back in and renew it. So the applicant agrees with all of those terms. If it ceases to exist as an in-law, the kitchen or kitchen appliances that have been added will be removed. And of course, the zoning board may allow inspections to confirm compliance with the ordinance and the applicant agrees with that as well. I have also provided two letters of support from neighbors on either side of Jennifer who support this application out on Goldsmith Drive. So from 23 and 19 Goldsmith Drive, you all have those in your packages, I hope. And with that, the applicant requests that the board approve the granting of a special permit for an in-law apartment at 21 Goldsmith Drive. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Mead. At this point now, if the applicant has done presenting, we'll go to public comment. Again, if anyone is, would like to be heard, please raise your hand electronically and you will be recognized. Not seeing any hands. Give it a few.
Not seeing any, Chair.
Okay, I'm seeing no requests for public comment. We close public comment and we'll go to questions from the board. Mr. Delisle, do you have any questions for the applicant? Remember to unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I do have just one question, Attorney Mead. On the slide in the presentation showing the existing and proposed floor plans, just so I understand, the area in the red box is common area and therefore outside of the calculation of the 651 square feet, correct?
That is correct. And just as an aside, even if it were included, it would be under the 900 square feet.
Right, right.
863, but it is outside of that calculation. That is correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
That's my only question, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanon, do you have any question?
No, it's a thorough presentation. I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chagman, any questions?
No questions. Great presentation, great use of an existing building without having any additions. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I also have no further questions at this time. So we'll close the questioning portion and we'll move on to deliberations. Comment deliberations again, I'm sure will be expertly crafted around the in-law apartment and special permit requirements that we need to be aware of as we go through this. So, Mr. Delisle, I'll start with you again.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I can support this project. I think that this, as Mr. Chagman just said, this is a good use of an existing structure. So I can certainly support this. And I think that Attorney Mead took us expertly through the special permit findings, all of which were satisfied. So I don't think there's any need to go through those again. And in the interest of letting everyone get a chance to go through the special permit findings, I'll yield my time to Mr. Swanon and he can take us through the special permit findings.
Teamwork, I love it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanon, a lot of pressure.
Oh, I tell you, well, I think it nicely meets all the special permit findings. And I suppose we could go through them. It's, the proposed use is essential and desirable as a public convenience. It's not going to create any undue traffic congestion or provide any overload on the water or drainage. The special use regulations regarding the parking have been addressed. I don't think it impairs the integrity of the neighborhood. I think it's, it's, you know, it's using the existing space. So I think it's in harmony with the neighborhood. I think it meets the special permit criteria, so I could support this application.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Swanon. Mr. Chagman, do you have anything?
Nothing to air, Vice Chair. I can support the application as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would agree, I think the presentation was thorough and we've highlighted the issues that need to be highlighted in support. And I too can support this. I think it's something that, it's nice when people do this. And with that, I will be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit application for 21 Goldsmith Drive, 2020-088.
I'll second the motion, Bud Chagman.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. Swanon, seconded by Mr. Chagman. And we'll now go to a vote. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb is recused. Mr. Swanon?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Mr. Moore is a yes. So it's four in the affirmative. Application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we turn the page to our next application, which is for 2224 Oak Street, Richard Morale, care of Lisa Mead, me tell them and Costa. Dimensional variance for lots one and two, that would be 2021-089 and 2021-090. Lot split creating separate lot for existing home, a lot split creating a separate lot for a new single-family home. And might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Lisa Mead, me tell them and Costa, on behalf of Richard Morale, Mr. Morale, and actually with me this evening are, well, not physically with me, but here available virtually are also Debbie and Jim Nelson. Debbie is the daughter of Richard Morale and Jim is the son-in-law. This is a property at 22 to 24 Oak Street in Newport. And Mr. Morale has lived in this house on Oak Street, which he purchased with his wife since 1964. They would like to divide the lot. This would allow his daughter Debbie and her husband Jim, who grew up on Oak Street, that is Debbie did, to build a house next to store on what would be created as the Beacon Street lot. The property is located in the R2 zoning district. Currently, the property includes Mr. Morale's home, which is facing Oak Street and consists of 14,787 square feet and contains 290 feet of frontage on Oak and Beacon Street, excuse me, Beacon Avenue. So that lot is non-conforming with regard to front yard setback, which is 7.2 feet, where 25 feet are required. Mr. Morale proposes to break his currently merged two lots. And we'll show you a plan in a minute so you can see how the two lots were originally created, back into two lots of a different configuration. While the lots are shy of the required area and a couple of setbacks, they're not dissimilar to the other lots located on Oak Street and Beacon Avenue in this neighborhood. If you go to the next slide, please. So this is the lot overall, right now as it exists. And Mr. Morale's house, there is to the right, as you can see, and it faces Oak Street. And then Beacon Avenue wraps around the corner. You can kind of see the weird shape that this lot is. We'll talk about that in a little bit. The proposal is to divide the lot, you can see the line, and create a new single-family lot right in the rear there facing Beacon Avenue. So Lot One, I'm going to call it, so for the purposes of clarity in our discussion, would be the lot where Mr. Morale's house currently exists. So if that were changed into a single-family lot right there, that would be 10,000 square feet of required area, which is, but it would exist only in 6,889 square feet. So it would be shy of the lot area requirement. The only other thing that it would not meet is the existing setback, which is already non-conforming at 7.2 feet. So the variance we'd be seeking there is lot area and lot frontage, although we wouldn't be changing anything on that building at all. As to Lot Two, you can see the proposed red outline. There's currently a pool on this part of the property. But you can see the proposed red line outline of the house and the accessory garage next door. So Lot Two would consist of 7,898 square feet of area. I just point out as a little footnote here, after we submit the application, the planning office called and said, thought we needed a variance also, not just for lot area, but for how lot area is defined with the box, if you will. And so I submitted that request, but it's actually, we're asking for a lot area variance in that box helps define lot area. So it's all one variance. I just didn't want to confuse anybody by that second letter. So in any event, the lot area requires 10,000 square feet and what we're proposing is 7,898. The frontage is 124, where 90 is required. The front setback would be off by four feet. So it would be 21, where 25 is required. It meets both side setbacks and the rear setback would be 23 or 25 are required. So the variance would be for lot area, front and rear setbacks. So if you go to the next slide, please, Andy. So this slide shows you how those current lots are existing as two. So they've merged obviously for zoning purposes. But those are the two lots. And so it's an odd-shaped merged lot as it exists. You know, I like to describe it kind of as a piece of pie bordered on, bordered by the public street on two sides. Even once merged, the lots continue to have an odd shape, which narrows toward the west end of the lot, as you can see. The redrawing of the lot lines actually make a lot more sense and they're more uniform with the remainder of the houses along Beacon Street, but they remain odd-shaped, oddly shaped lots. So according to the standards, if you could go to the, well, actually keep it here for a minute, Andy. I've already gone through this. If you go back, because it's good to see the, how they compare to the other lots. So the shape of the, you know, the variance standards go to shape to part of the soil condition. And here, the shape of the merged properties is unique even Um, and the, here, the shape of the merged properties is unique even as merged or unmerged in that the frontage on Oak is much longer on the op- from the opposite line on the westerly end of the lot. Additionally, as a result of this different in the end lines, the lot line along Oak Street is longer than the westerly lot line, even though they start on the same plane on the northerly lot line, making the sideline along Beacon in odd shape and unsquared, as you can see. Well, there you go. Once divided, the lots continue to be of an odd shape through no fault of the petitioner at all. We'll go back to that slide in a minute. Um, so they continue to be odd shaped, which causes the need for the um, the setback variances. Lot One continues to suffer the same fate of the overly long front lot yard line along Oak Street with the same angled line along Beacon, that doesn't change. And similarly, Lot Two suffers the greater fate is the most narrow portion of the lot remains to the west. Uh, this fate is due to the layout of Beacon Avenue itself, which unlike in any other section of Beacon Avenue, runs at a distinct angle, starting at the intersection of Oak, moving toward to the west to the rear property line or Lot Two, and then straightens out once again to be more uniform when it gets closer to Riley Avenue. While there's little case law addressing the circumstances related to structures, here it does say under forty-eight, section ten, that you can have a hardship related to soil condition, shape or topography or such land or structures. Uh, and that may support the granting of a variance here. Lot One, there is an existing non-conforming primary residential structure. There'll be no changes to that structure, and therefore there's nothing we can do that will change the existing front yard setback in that particular instance. Also, Mr. Moral wishes to age in place and to be able to do so, to have the financial wherewithal to do so um, without having to sell his property to some third party. By selling his property to his daughter, it solves two problems. One, it liquidates the investment he and his wife made a number of years ago and having his daughter and son-in-law close by him to assist as he ages. Well, financial hardship alone is not enough to justify the grant of variance. It, it can be a factor when combined with other hardships um, related to the land. Here, the financial hardship is in addition to the shape um, of the lot, um, that we've talked about. The proposal does not derogate from the intent and purpose of the ordinance, where in fact the resulting lots are more uniform than the existing property. If you could go back, Andy, to the site plan, you can, we can see that just for a moment. That's, there we go. So if you look at this shape of the lot, so here, they become a little more uniform with the other lots in the neighborhood. And now, if you could go back to the mind maps, Andy. So it won't derogate from the purpose and intent of the ordinance where the lots become a little bit more uniform, even though they're still oddly shaped. Further, this is a single-family residential neighborhood, which is what we're proposing to construct on the second lot. Indeed, um, in section one C-two, under the purpose section of the ordinance, it provides that one of the purposes is to conserve the value of the property would do consideration for the character of the zones and their particular suitability for particular uses. Hereby allowing the petitioner to re-divide his property, the value is being conserved and the single-family home use is consistent with the neighborhood. Further, the proposed change will not be detrimental to the neighborhood, as there will be no negative impacts on any neighbors as a result of the granting of the variance. Interestingly, the northerly side of Beacon Avenue has consistently uniform-shaped lots, as we've noticed, and you can see that going down at seventeen Oak, which is the corner across twenty-six Beacon, twenty-four Beacon and twenty Pine, forty and forty-two Beacon in the opposite direction at thirty-six to thirty-eight Beacon. The property was the odd lot out, so to speak. The proposed Lot One, Lot Two are much more consistent with the shape of the lots on the northern side of Beacon Avenue. Further, the size of Lot One and Lot Two are not inconsistent with the lots in the area. Uh, particularly those on the northerly side of uh, Beacon Avenue, which I've noted here on this plan. So Lot One is six thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine square feet and Lot Two is proposed to be at seven thousand eight hundred and eight. Seventeen Oak directly across the street is six thousand ninety-eight. Uh, twenty-six Beacon is eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine square feet, twenty-four, eight thousand four hundred and fifty square feet. Twenty Pine, which is on the corner of Pine and Beacon, is six thousand eight hundred and eighty-two. Uh, thirty-six to thirty-eight Beacon right next door is uh, fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty. Forty Beacon, as you continue down to the bottom of the page, is eight thousand two hundred and seventy-six. And forty-two Beacon is seven thousand eight hundred and forty. So it is neither, the proposed lots are neither the largest nor the smallest on the street and are much more consistent with the remaining lots. Um, so Andy, if you could skip down to uh, slide nine. I've already gone through these things. There we go. So what's being proposed, uh, is the proposed home is in keeping with the neighborhood. It's a very traditional Gamble style home uh, in this section of the city. Um, and you can see that um, the Nelsons and Mr. Moral have taken some time to design this home, and you can go to the next slide, Andy. That's the front elevation. And here's the rear elevation. And the next slide. And uh, the left elevation. And the next slide, the right elevation. And the next slide, we have a rendering. As you can see, there's Mr. Moral's house to the right and the proposed new home in the middle. Um, so if you can go to the next slide. We've also provided letters of support, uh, five letters of support, um, from people who are all around the property, including those directly across the street. So all the direct abutters and those who are directly across the street on Beacon Avenue have all supported Mr. Moral's efforts um, to build a home on this property. With that, um, I think that I'll just stop there. I have a couple more slides of the um, property itself. I want you to go to the next slide, Andy. And just so you can see, this is looking down Beacon Avenue. This is a corner of Beacon and Oak, and so you can see the long stretch of um, property there. Um, that's left open uh, behind Mr. Moral's house. If you go to slide eighteen, I'll just slow show the architectural drawings of the garage. So we have the single-car garage. Um, detached, that would go right to the left of the house, directly to the left of the house. So with that, we believe that uh, lots one and two that are to be created are both oddly shaped now and will remain oddly shaped, which is the reason for the setback requirement uh, variance. Uh, they won't create any inconsistencies with the surrounding properties in this portion of the R-two district and on the northerly side of Beacon Avenue. The new lots will neither be the largest nor the smallest on the street, and therefore they will be consistent and not unusual. Um, and the neighborhood supports this proposal and the applicant's request that the um, board grant the variances to allow the construction of a single-family home on a separate lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. Um, with the presentation complete, we'll now move to um, public comment. So anyone in attendance tonight, virtually wants to raise their hand um, and comment on this application, please raise your hand now. Seeing none. Is that correct, Andy? I don't see any.
I've seen none.
Look at anyone off in case they're struggling to click, but I think we're good at this point.
Agreed.
Seeing no uh, hands raised virtually, uh, we will close public comment and go to questions from the board. Um, we'll lead off with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh. So the, the thing I, I think that's the the real, the key piece here is that you're taking this one lot that's fourteen thousand square feet and turning it into two lots that are one sixty-eight hundred square feet and the other seventy-eight hundred square feet where ten thousand square feet is required. And so each one of the proposed lots requires a variance for that, and then the the new lot would require a couple of other variances, and I think that's i- is that correct, Attorney Mead, that you need basically one variance for the, the lot facing Oak Street, the existing home, and then the m- the new home would need a variance for uh, for the lot area and then the front and the uh, back setbacks?
Um, almost, Mr. Dial. Um, the, how, the lot one, the house, let's call it the original house lot. Um, it would also need a variance for front yard setback, only because we're creating a new lot and that so therefore the seven point eight foot setback would need a variance as well, even though we're not doing anything.
Oh, right, okay. Okay, understood. Okay. And you, um, in your presentation, Attorney Mead, um, with respect to the issue of the oddness, the odd shape of the lot. Um, Andy, if you could go to the overhead slide of the neighborhood that shows the um, the uh, the tax parcel numbers. Ah, yeah. Um, so the two lots, twenty-nine nineteen, or two tax parcels and twenty-nine eighteen, uh, were they, were they merged before the, the Morals purchased them, or did the Morals purchase and merge the lot?
Well, the Morals certainly didn't merge the lots. Zoning merges lots, right? So um, the Morals uh, purchased the, the two lots. They purchased the original one in nineteen sixty-four. And I think later in um, the, it was either seventy-four or eighty-four. Hang on one minute, I'll look at the the other lot was purchased, but the zoning changed, right? So zoning changed a couple of different times. Um. So the house lot was purchased in sixty-four and the additional lot was purchased in um, seventy-three, so I was a little, little bit off. Um, so the zoning changed. Um, so you might recall a few years ago, this was the R-three district still. Um, and the um, the lot area requirements were smaller. So twenty-nine eighteen would not, I don't think it would have been a buildable lot even under that. I don't have the measurements for twenty-nine eighteen. Uh, but twenty-nine nineteen would have been a conforming lot, but for the side yard setback.
Right, understood.
They didn't actually merge them, so to speak, right? They, they merged for zoning purposes, but they bought them at two different times.
Well, they also merged for purposes of title when a, when a, a person acquires title to one property while owning uh, a parcel next door to, to it. Don't they merge for purposes of title where you have one owner?
No, not necessarily. Not unless that, not unless your deeds are put together. These deeds have never been put together. Um, you actually have to do that. You'd have to put them both together, so they could carry, they could carry, and then, and that's why they're two tax parcels, because at the registry of deeds need to be two separate parcels, but for zoning purposes, they've merged. Uh, you know, let's say, for example, um, let's just go down to thirty-six to thirty-eight Beacon, and let's say that that house had a house on it and it was an empty lot next door, twenty-eight dash one C, right? And that was empty. And the zoning was what it is today. Let's say those are two both conforming lots, and so now we increase the zoning lot and we require twenty thousand square feet per lot. Um, then twenty-eight one C would merge into thirty-six, thirty-eight if they were owned by the same person with nobody doing anything. They wouldn't have had to take any action to do that. So it's just for z- for the purposes of zoning by operation of law, they merge.
Right, okay, okay. By operation of law, and then the zoning changes and then you're left uh, with a great, with a, with a more restriction on what you can do on your, on your property.
Right, two, yeah, so you have two non-conforming lots that um, end up merging, correct?
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, that's good information to know. All right, I think that's all I have for questions uh, for right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Um, Ms. Webb, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Um, I do. Attorney Mead, do you have any comparable information for um, lot area going um, up Oak Street on the abutting property and maybe one or two up from that?
Um, I don't. I mean, we, you can, this, one of the reasons I like to include the mind maps is because you can see, right? Um, so um, I would suggest to you that the lots going up Oak Street are probably a little bit bigger than what our two proposed lots are, because they're narrower, but they're longer, right? So I don't know, I didn't, you know, I did it down Beacon, because that's what the new lot faces. Um, but I didn't do it up Oak Street. It, you know, the seventeen Oak is there, because it's a corner lot. Um, so I did not, I didn't compare up Oak Street.
Yeah, the existing house is on Oak Street, so.
Right, but and it faces seventeen Oak across the street, right? Right. And certainly, three-nine dash thirty-three, I don't know what number that is, Oak, but which is to the left of seventeen Oak. That's probably a little bit bigger than what's being proposed facing Oak, for sure.
Yeah, no, I was just looking at, you know, twenty-nine, twenty, the direct abutter on Oak, it looks to be about the same exact size as um, twenty-nine nineteen.
Yeah, I don't dis- I don't disagree with that. I didn't, I didn't do that. I, you know, the, the, this be- still remains a corner lot. Let's call, you know, Lot One still remains a corner lot, which is why I compared it to the other homes on Beacon Ave. Right, so it still has frontage on Beacon Ave. We have, we carry up over fifty-four, seventy-four feet of frontage on Beacon Ave continues um, for that lot.
Was the um, the pie-shaped parcel on the corner of the twenty-nine dash eighteen was that when the current people bought it, were they buying it from the city?
No, it was the, it was the whoever did the, the, you know, this, of course, was all laid out by a developer at some point in time, right? Um, it, no, they did not buy it from the city. I'll look, I have the deep reference.
It's just so odd that it was ever a separate parcel to begin with.
You know, so they, who knows how they laid out that's, you know, which would have been a, a, you know, a subdivision, it's an extension of the city streets back when they laid out that part of Beacon and, and those, and Oak Street carrying on down that area, Riley. Um, so I didn't, I didn't do it, you know, I didn't do a full title going back to what the origins of that, of that lot were. No, there was a, if somebody, it was owned by, okay. Um, I just got a text. This is the problem with our meetings, right? So it was actually owned by the person who owned at the time twenty-nine dash seventeen, and they had a greenhouse on it.
Oh, across the street.
Yeah.
Interesting. Um. So this um, the zoning was changed. This was downzoned from R-three to R-two. And um, now the minimum square footage required is ten thousand square feet. Um. I guess, you know, I, I initially had uh, real concerns about this with the two new lots being both deficient in area. But then when you kind of compare it to the other lots along Beacon, um, the proposal looks like it, it might make some sense, but I, I still have not um, um, sort of finalized my thought process on this, and I'll defer to some of my colleagues for further questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Uh, Mr. Swanton, would you like uh, to ask some questions of the applicant?
Yeah, uh, could you uh, put up the plot plan? Side a question about the setbacks. Andy, the uh,
Slide three.
Slide three, there you go. Um. We've talked about the lot size. They're both being below the ten thousand square feet uh, that's now required. My question's about the setbacks for the new house. I mean, you're looking for a, a variance on the lot size. Why also make the house too close to both its front and back lot lines? I mean, is, is there was there a way to do this, so you didn't have to get variances there as well?
So, you know, obviously, Mr. Swanton, uh, there's a way to do a number of things, right? And um, this was economics, like my clients and I had a long, had a long conversation about this. Um, because of the, of the style of the house and um, the construction methods used in it. Um, this is a stain size, so to speak. Um, and so uh, it made it more economical to do then do the construction. Um, if the setback um, overage in the front and the rear of, I think it's uh, hang on a minute, I just want to be accurate on this. Uh, four feet and two feet uh, make a difference to this board. Uh, excuse me, my client is willing to reduce the Excuse me, my client is willing to reduce the edges of that, uh, rear in the front of the house.
Okay, thank you. My other question, I, I think it's actually more for, uh, for the planning department. You know, we got a staff report before each meeting and they had suggested that this is one that we should, uh, perhaps not approve tonight. And I'd like to plan to give the planning department a chance to comment upon why they recommend that.
Sure, uh, well, actually, this is Andy Port, if I could speak to that. Um, the office respects whatever decision the board will issue, uh, but the point we were trying to make in the staff report, and this is something that's, uh, comes up quite frequently in Massachusetts, with these variances is, um, whether or not there's a hardship involved here, um, and how much of a variance is being granted. The board, does he be in particular compared to some other permitting boards, does have to think about, um, so-called precedent setting. And, um, I don't think it's hard to believe that, you know, applicants in the future or attorneys in the future will ask for similar relief elsewhere in the city, um, for smaller than lot sizes that are required under zoning by the city council. So the, the concern that we would note there, just, um, you know, there were some variances debated a few years back, uh, that were issued by this board or different composition of this board. But there were debates had about whether or not the board was going too far in, in granting variances or essentially exceptions from the zoning regulations that have been adopted by the council. So the concern there was just that the board be fully cognizant if it wishes to grant the relief. Not only is it granting a substantive, um, you know, numerical, um, variance from the ordinance requirements to create two lots that are non-conforming, where you have one right now that's, that's merged to just better, uh, meet the zoning requirements. Uh, and you also have the potential for others to cite this application as comparable relief to be granted elsewhere in the city, whether the same neighborhood or elsewhere. So that, that's the point we're trying to make, um, you know, the board will have to take that into account, um, amongst, uh, its other considerations.
If I could, Mr. Swan, might I address that just for a moment?
Go ahead.
Um, so, you know, so first of all, um, I certainly respect, um, what the position is as staff. But that, that's why you have independent boards, because every situation is unique. And, um, there, you know, I don't need to tell you, while I may tell you, well, you've done it before. They're not precedent setting and every single thing is unique. And what I have described to you here is probably not applicable to any other lot in your report. Can I find another lot in new report that I can make an argument for a variance on? Sure, but you have the independent authority to decide whether or not all these conditions are met. And we have showed consistency throughout this neighborhood. Through, um, you know, through the, through the size of lots and, and things of that and the use of single-family homes and, and whatnot. In addition, not to say the least of which is that the neighborhood actually supports this proposal. So while I certainly respect Mr. Port's position, um, the board's decisions are not precedent-setting. And you know that, um, because myself and others try to argue that obviously at certain times. But you get to make a decision on each separate application that comes before you. And there are times that relief needs to be granted. Otherwise, we wouldn't even have a variance provision in the ordinance or in the statute to allow this board to do that. So while I respect the, the position of the office, um, I don't think that what's being requested here is out of the ordinary for this area, um, for this street, for this neighborhood. Um, and is consistent with, uh, the purpose and intent of the ordinance, as I stated earlier.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate you both, uh, providing answers to that and I have no other questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you all, uh, Mr. Chagrin, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I've got one question, maybe it goes to Andy or Attorney Mead. One of the previous, uh, zoning board of appeals I served on, we had kind of a, a rule, we, we thought it was based on mass law, but perhaps it's not. But if you have two deeds and two tax parcels, it doesn't matter whether zoning merges them or not. When it, when it comes time to split them as we're being requested. So we're, we're splitting twenty-nine nineteen and twenty-nine eighteen down the middle, if you will. We're actually creating two separate splits. Twenty-nine nineteen would be split down the middle and twenty-nine eighteen would be split down the middle. And, um, we were of the understanding back then anyways, that this was, uh, this was taboo, this is something that the fool's errand. So perhaps I'm, I'm under misguided information, but this, this just seems like because, uh, because there are two specific parcels, there must be two deeds, two titles and two tax parcels. We're actually creating four lots, uh, just, maybe someone could explain that.
Mr. Chang, you, um, actually bring up a really good point and thank you very much because neither myself nor the, uh, staff report, um, commented on this. But you should know it. So you are not actually splitting the lots, that's the job of the, of the planning board, right? You're giving approval that for a lot split, these dimensions are okay. Then there has to be an A and R plan filed with the planning board, which would create actually these two lots as presented to you. Um, based upon your, um, dimensional variances, if that's what's approved. So, um, the, an A and R plan would have to be filed, which would create two lots and not four, nothing else. That this plan itself couldn't be recorded at the registry of deeds absent, absent an A and R plan being, uh, being created and approved by the planning board.
Uh, this is Andy.
Just Andy's comments, thank.
Yeah, sorry, this is Andy, just as to the question that was raised earlier, I didn't, um, quite follow. And I haven't seen any, uh, local regulation and certainly not aware of any state statute in zoning that, um, speaks to that. I think as I understand the issue that you were describing, I don't know what the other community was or what the other regulations were. But I don't see in concept what you're describing as being at issue here. I think it's just a question of, um, the, the proportion of the variance being requested, um, and, you know, compatibility, you know, with the neighborhood, if you will.
Okay. No other questions, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chagrin. I don't have any further questions, I think, um, there've been some excellent questions from my colleagues. So at this point, closing, uh, questioning and going to deliberations and, uh, back around the horn, we go back up to Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Again, you, where I started, uh, with my questions, I think I mentioned that this was a hard one because we were being asked to split a fourteen thousand square foot lot into two smaller lots. And we've had some really good discussion here and some good, um, questions have been asked and some interesting points have been raised. And I think that one of the points was with respect to the downzoning. And I'm wondering, I, I believe that the whole purpose of the downzoning was to, uh, create a situation where we'd have less density. Um, and that's the, the idea behind, uh, downzoning. And so I, I'm wondering here if we're splitting this lot, creating two lots and then building another house, if that sort of flies in the face of what the city council was trying to do when they downzoned this area? So that, that sort of troubles me. With respect to the, the, the four-part test as to the variance, I can see some things working out in favor of the applicant and there are a couple that I'm having a hard time with. So I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with this one. And, uh, I think, that being said, I'll, I'll turn it over to, uh, my colleagues to, to hear their comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I too am struggling with this. Because of the, um, as Mr. Doyle said, and it was my comment originally about the downzoning aspect that, um, you know, I think the real intent of that is to, um, you know, prevent more dense development. And, um, clearly the fact the applicant's asking for a variance to do what they want to do is indicative of the fact that what they want to do does not meet the current zoning. So, um, our board's supposed to provide relief for that where there's hardship? And I just, I'm not seeing the hardship really. Yes, there's a slight, you know, angle to the lot. I don't, I don't see that as a tremendous hardship in this particular circumstance. And I think, you know, the potential result of having two undersized lots and it's, you know, they're fairly significantly undersized lots, from the ten thousand square foot, um, required minimum. It's just, it's hard for me to, um, think about approving this.
All right, thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swan.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I too am struggling with this one. Uh, I, I think, uh, Ms. Webb actually said it quite well. I, uh, you know, there's the human interest side of this story where families own this for a long time, the daughter would like to move there. Really works well for the family, the neighbors don't mind. That's all very compelling. But the flip side of it is, you know, how many other lots are there around where you could do this? And it's, you know, why do we have zoning? And so I, you know, I, I guess I, I'm having a hard time getting behind this proposal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swan, Mr. Chagnon.
I, I agree with my colleagues, uh, you know, the, uh, right out of the box, uh, creating two undersized lots is of great concern to me. And then to have it, uh, you know, the addition of the fact that we're, we're now asking for, uh, you know, new non-conformities for the second house and a new one for the first house. I don't know, it just, it just seems like it's a, it's a mess rolling downhill. So I, I am also struggling with, uh, with supporting this position.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Go ahead.
Um, so I don't, I don't like messes rolling downhill.
No one does.
Because they just get bigger, right? So, um, what I would like to do is, um, continue this, um, because I, I think what I'd like to do is provide some context, uh, for the zoning changes that took place, um, as expressed, um, as some inquiries expressed, um, by the board, uh, to make sure that the downzoning went this far and actually to look at the changes in the zoning that took place since the morals purchased the property. Um, and then also to address, um, some of the other issues related to the proposed construction on the second lot and the, uh, the number of variances that are received on that lot. Um, and take a look at some of the, um, other quote potential, uh, lots in the area that this might occur, um, or could be, um, subject to this. So if the board is open to that, we'd like a continuance, um, to, uh, your next meeting so that we could get, um, some of that information for the board, perhaps to take away some of those concerns.
Um, I think that that makes sense, given the flavor and the direction of the discussions and, uh, we'll put that to the board. I believe our next meeting is the twenty-sixth. So you were requesting a continuance to the twenty-sixth.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so before, we have a, a request to continue this application, uh, to our next meeting on the twenty-sixth, uh, to gather, pass some more information presented to us.
This is Steven Doyle, I'll make a motion to continue the variance applications for twenty-four to twenty, uh, excuse me, twenty-two to twenty-four Oak Street, application twenty-two-one zero eight-nine and twenty-two-one zero nine-zero to, to January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. In making that motion, uh, is that the, the number of the application is twenty-two-one dash zero eight-nine or is it twenty-two-zero-eight-nine? Andy?
Uh, I think that should be twenty-twenty, Mr..
Yeah, I believe that should be twenty. Twenty, I think that might be just a typo and I will check with Diane, but I'm pretty sure that's.
Yeah, sorry, that's in the draft motion.
It's, yeah, yeah.
I'll second it, Mr. Swan.
Okay, so we have the corrected, um, application number to twenty-two-zero-eight-nine and twenty-two-zero-nine-zero. Motion, um, to continue to our meeting on the twenty-sixth, made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Swan. And we now take a vote, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore is a yes, all the affirmative, the continuance is granted and we will, uh, revisit this on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
Thank you. Okay, our final, um, public meeting item tonight is for, um, application twenty-two-zero-nine-one, a special permit for non-conformities for eighteen Strong Street to construct a second-story addition above an existing single-story home resulting in an upward extension of pre-existing non-conforming rear setback. Um, might we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, hi.
Echo.
Hi, my name is Peter Zani. Uh, I'm the manager for eighteen Strong LLC.
Peter, this is.
Currently, we are, um, re-remodeling the, uh, both eighteen and sixteen, uh, Strong Street. The exterior, we have permits to do roofing, siding, decks, windows, uh, along with the existing, um, eight-by-fifteen, um, my room on the side of eighteen Strong Street, um, as per the, um, the plot plan. What we are looking for from, um, from you guys is to add a second story onto the existing first floor. Um, it is non-conforming with the rear setback of the lot. We are not, um, we're not increasing any non-conformities. We are looking to do a second story that will blend in nicely with the existing home. Both fascias off, it's, uh, the, the whole, the whole home instead of that ugly shed roof on the side of the house there that literally right now is falling off, um, before we repaired it. So what we are coming to you is, um, again, to put a second story on top of, on top of that and, um, replace, uh, or move some of the windows on the rear of the house here to different locations for bathrooms and bedrooms, uh, alike, if that falls under your jurisdiction. So, um, we look to you for your, uh, for your input on, on this matter. We, um, are also looking to add a rear door to the backyard and, um, for access to the rear yard off of, uh, off of the new kitchen at this location.
Is that, is that it for now, Mr. Zani?
I am open to any questions.
Okay, great. All right, first we will, um, thank you for the, uh, for the information and, and what you're trying to do, can you hear me?
Hello?
Have you lost, have you lost us, we can hear you?
Uh, yeah, Peter, we can hear you.
Hello?
I don't think he can hear us. Peter, can you hear us?
Hello? Jenna, help!
Give John a second to correct this.
Not sure why he can't hear us, must be something.
I know, it was, seemed to be working fine. Peter, any luck now, can you hear us? All right, now it seems like we lost them altogether. Peter, are you able to unmute yourself?
Hello?
Can you hear us now? They're a one-way communication.
Hello? Jenna? Jenna, help!
Just call in the cavalry.
They can't hear me. Hello? Hello?
We can hear him, he just doesn't hear us.
Is anyone there?
Yep, can you hear us? Peter, we can hear you. Peter, we got you, can, can you hear us?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay.
I'm not sure if, depending on where the applicant's able to go at this point technologically.
I'm not sure if, depending on where the applicant's able to go at this point technologically, I don't know if it sounded like he was wrapping up his presentation. I don't know. I'll leave it to you as to how you want to handle things.
Yeah. I mean, it seemed like he was done. I was just trying to confirm that.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, it's just, I don't know if he'll be able to resolve his issue.
We can look for public comment and circle back, or I mean, I think we should be able to communicate with him, but we could kind of move forward with the meeting. He should be able to hear comments, so. And I see a couple of hands raised. We hear you, can you hear us? I have a number to call him.
Andy, do you have an email address for him or something, some other way of trying to contact him?
Uh, yeah, I do have an email address here. I can try. I don't know whether they'll be checking it.
Thanks, if you can hear, shine in.
We can hear you.
His phone number is on his application. His phone number is on his application. Can you just call him?
Maybe while we're trying to get back in touch with Mr. Zani, we can, I mean. We could move to the approval of the minutes. Can we? Can we blend, I guess, is the question. Put this on pause for a second, move to the business meeting. Give the technology a chance to catch up and at least keep moving forward. Are we on the phone with him, trying to get a hold?
I am trying to get him on the phone. Everything was working fine, not sure what happened there.
Rocky start, and then it seemed fine. Hello, is this Peter? Hi, Peter, this is Andy Port from the City of Newbury Port. Yeah, why don't I, why don't I try this? Why don't I try to put you on speakerphone on my phone? And if you can speak, hopefully the folks will be able to hear you through my computer as if you're here, and then we could proceed, okay? Okay, Peter, could you speak up for a moment?
Yeah, hi, how are you? Um, did you get any of the presentation at all, or was it all gone?
Yeah, we got the presentation. I think we were confirming whether or not you were finished with your presentation before the board went to deliberation or public comment.
Yeah, I believe I have pretty much completed. I'm looking naturally to, as I said, for the second story and some being able to relocate some windows and add add doors if that falls under your jurisdiction on eighteen Strong Street, please.
Okay, thank you very much. You can hear us now, right?
Yes, I got you on the speakerphone, yes.
Excellent. Okay, so with your presentation having completed, we will now move to public comment. So I see a few hands raised and glad you're back with us, you can hear them. So Andy, if you want to queue up.
Yeah. Chair, if I'm missing something, the two names, the two hands I see raised are both from Peter. I don't know if.
Okay, I was probably looking for help.
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, I just didn't see any other folks that are, were interested in speaking, but I'm happy to wait longer if you'd like.
I think people have had a long enough time to raise their hands, so we'll give it another few seconds, but. Yeah, I'm comfortable moving on. All right, seeing no public comment requested.
Letters of approval from the neighbors that I have attached on that you people should have that they that they are for this addition.
Thank you. Duly noted. And with the public comment done, we will move on to questions from the board. So, Mr. Delisle, do you have any questions to the applicant?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moore. I I have one question, yes. With regard to the the drawings, I was just having a little bit of difficulty. I think I under, I think I have the answer to this, but with respect to the side where the addition will be, is the addition going to span the forty foot width of the structure or just the fifteen foot width of the existing three season room?
So, Annie, did you hear the question?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Peter?
Yeah, it's an eight by fifteen second story structure. We're not changing any non-conformities that that already exists.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Webb, do you have any questions?
Um, Mr. Delisle stole my question. I was going to ask the same exact question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's good. He also gets to go first, right? So, all right. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swan?
No, I have no questions. I had the same one.
Killing you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chagnon.
Wow, same thing. Had the same question, same, and we got it answered. I'm all set. Thank you.
I I appreciate that. And I have no further questions of the applicant either, so we'll close questioning, we'll move to comment deliberations. So, Mr. Delisle, you get to lead off again.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moore. I think that I don't see any uh, addition of a new non-conformity here. And it would appear that based on the the comments of the the neighbors, the written submitted comments of the neighbors, that our se, our second prong of our special permit test for non-conformities will be met, too, which escapes me at this moment. In, I I would act, I would like to ask Mr. Zani one more question if if I could do so even during this portion of the the hearing.
Sure.
With respect to the to the cladding of the of the building, Mr. Zani, whatever you're putting on as part of the the remodeling of the building, will that be carried forward onto the addition? Or what are you planning?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you. So I think with respect to my comments, I I can I can support this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
Um, I also can support this application, and I just wanted to add that the staff report notes that the project does not appear to trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance. I guess I just wanted to clarify, is this another property that's like in the middle of the block here? I'm just looking at the the MIMAP photo from the staff report so that there, I was just questioning like whether the property really has a lot of frontage or is it just the driveway access?
Uh, if you'd like, I can pull that property up so you can see how it relates to the rest of the properties.
Thank you, that would be great.
Yeah.
It is, it is just a driveway access.
Okay.
But we have four, four to five parking spots for that unit alone.
There you go.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Picture's worth a thousand words, right?
All right, thanks, Ms. Webb. Uh, Mr. Swanton, do you have comments deliberation?
Uh, yeah, no, I walked by this and was surprised to look down this long driveway, and that's basically the frontage. No, I can support this. I think it's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chagnon.
Yeah, I can also support this. Makes sense. And again, as our colleague stated, it doesn't seem to create any other new non-conformities. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I would agree with the comments of my colleagues, and I can certainly support this as presented. So with that, we'll close deliberations and we're looking for a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion, Rachel Webb, to approve the special permit twenty twenty dash zero ninety-one for eighteen Strong Street, special permit for non-conformities.
I'll second that, Stephen Delisle.
A motion to approve made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Delisle. We now go to a vote, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Chagnon?
Yes.
Mr. Moore is also a yes, all in the affirmative. Uh, the application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Zani. And thanks for everyone being patient while we tried to reconnect. Thanks for the effort, Andy, to get him on the phone and make that happen. It was great. Um, with that application being approved, that concludes the public forum for tonight, and we'll close that and move on to our business meeting, which will first consist of approval of the minutes from our brief meeting on the eighth of December. And look for any comments or additions to the minutes, any comments or ads that anyone has seen and wants to make us aware of right now. And if not.
I I have something really minor. This is Ken Swanton, which is the page numbering. I mean, it was a marathon meeting. It went to almost midnight. It's, the minutes are eight pages long. Page one is one of eight, page two is two of four, page three is three of four, and it's just a little thing. They should all be of eight. So just a minor little thing. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, you know, the bottom of the page. But but other than that, I I would move that we approve the minutes as written.
Um, Mr. Chair, I had a couple of minor typos.
Okay.
Which I did forward to Gretchen, so.
Okay.
I'm not even going to address them. They were so minor, but.
So typos and page numerations being clarified.
Yeah, I would like to amend my motion to include Rachel's minor mods.
Perfect. So we have motion to approve minor mods and and page corrections by Mr. Swanton.
I'll second that.
Second, second by Ms. Webb, and we go to a vote, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Chagnon?
Yes.
Mr. Moore is a yes, the minutes to twelve eight twenty are approved with said changes. Um, the second item or my last item on if the business meeting is to make sure that we're comfortable with the decisions as they are written from prior meetings. We have already done the twelve fourteen Harrison Street written approval earlier by request of the applicant. So we're doing, we need to look at the sixty-eight Middle Street. And we'll look at that one first. So is everyone check the draft of this and?
Mr. Moore, could I just, could I just make one comment on the Harrison Street one?
Sure.
Uh, I realized that we already approved it. My first name was spelled incorrectly on the Harrison Street one. I'm sure that that's something that can be can be remedied as a Scrivener's error without having to cause a lot of problems.
Yes, apologies from the office for that. We'll take care of that.
Nope, problem, no problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, so with the Scrivener's error being taken care of on the Harrison Street, are there any issues or discussion to be had on the decision of sixty-eight Middle Street? None? Hearing, hearing none? Look for a motion.
Uh, this is Bud Shagnon. I make a motion to approve the decision for sixty-eight Middle Street, twenty 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 dash zero five three as submitted.
Back end, Ken Swanton.
Right, motion to approve as written, twenty twenty dash zero five three, made by Mr. Chagnon, seconded by Mr. Swanton, and we go to a vote, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Chagnon?
Yes.
Mr. Moore is also a yes, so we move forward with that decision as written. Uh, and lastly, thirty-two Franklin Street, twenty twenty dash zero eight one and twenty twenty dash zero eight two. Are we comfortable from your comments on this draft decision as written?
I think so.
Okay. There are no edits or no suggestions? We can look for a vote. So we look for a motion. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve thirty-two Franklin Street? Road we want to discuss?
This is Bud Shagnon. I'll make a motion to to approve the draft decision for thirty-two Franklin Street, twenty twenty dash zero eight one and twenty twenty dash zero eight two as submitted.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Excellent. Motion to approve the minutes thirty-two Franklin Street, made by Mr. Chagnon, seconded by Mr. Swanton. We now go to a vote, Mr. Delisle.
So I was absent for this one and didn't participate in this decision. Do do I still vote on this or 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 not?
I would say unless you're qualified, I don't think you do.
Right.
Andy? I would say no.
I don't know.
I would say no. Um, so we'll, we'll say no there, Ms. Webb.
Um. Yes, we're voting on the approval of the draft decision.
Draft decision.
Thirty-two Franklin, yes.
Yes, Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Chagnon?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore is a yes, that's four in the affirmative, and therefore we'll move ahead with thirty-two Franklin Street as written. Well, that concludes everything on the agenda for tonight. First meeting down, it's not midnight, that's good.
Yay.
It's not a lot of enthusiasm, but we'll take it. So now.
Move to adjourn.
There we go.
Second.
Excellent, voice vote. All those in favor, say hi.
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 I better hear no nays. All right, excellent, meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good job.
Thank you.